There was a question earlier today about whether or not it's the 2020 millage rate. It is the 2020 millage rate, although we are working on the 2021 budget and the 2020 millage rate will fund the 2021 budget. So I just wanted to make sure that I made that clear because that question had come up earlier today. Okay. So the first thing we're going to do is hold a public hearing for the 2020 millage rate. And I'm going to ask Sarah Andrews to come up and open up the 2020 millage rate presentation and then after that I will open up for public comments.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. What's shown on the screen is what was published in the paper. It was published the last two Tuesdays. So this shows our five-year history. What was advertised was a 6.5 millage rate. Our current millage rate is 5.743. So the change in the proposed rate from the current rate is a 24.5% increase in revenue. We did hold the budget workshop last week with the council in which we discussed that what we are budgeting so far is a 6.25 millage rate.
Okay, I appreciate that opening and now I will open up for public comment. If anyone here, now I have a, are we going to do public comments on the?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So if you're here to speak for the 2020 millage rate and you would like to make a public comment, I'll ask you to come forward now. I don't have a list of those people. Would you state your name and address for the record?
Hi, Janet Hileman, 44 Maple Valley Drive, Villarica, Villarica, Georgia.
Give me just a moment. So you did actually sign up for public comment. Was this for the special called meeting as well or just for the 2020 millage rate?
For the 2020 millage rate.
Okay, you have three minutes. Are we going to put that up on the screen? They'll keep it. They'll keep it. All right, three minutes. Go ahead.
Oh, my comments are going to be real short. I just would like to implore the council to not raise the millage rate and to keep it at the current rollback rate. Because I think these are difficult times because of COVID and a lot of homeowners, they're, they risk not making their payments. They risk possibly losing their homes. And I think, right, and a lot of people have lost their jobs. I just think it's a particularly bad time to raise the millage rate, considering what it could do to a lot of the citizens and the community. I think I implore the council to think about that.
Okay, I appreciate that. Is there anyone else who would like to make public comment? Please state your name and address for the record, sir.
John Hannaback, 3106 Golfer's Way. I had not planned on speaking at the millage rate increase. My regret is not having attended previous hearings, but not having attended the budget hearings. That's where I think it would be more effective for, for people like myself. But following the last comment, I agree, it's tough times. But on the other hand, it's been a tough time for the city as well. And we are in arrears because we've not received the income that the city anticipates and had budgeted. I just ask you to be as gentle as you can. Don't increase the millage rate in anticipation that you won't raise it again for another 12 years or whatever it's been. So understand we have needs and we have to meet those. We have to provide for it in budget. I just ask you to be kind. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, is there anyone else who would like to speak on the 2020 millage rate?
Mayor, I have a public comment that was sent via email.
Okay, go ahead.
And so I'll read it and I read it simply because the person couldn't be here and took the time to write it. Whether I agree or disagree doesn't matter. I'm simply reading it as a courtesy to this constituent. Since I cannot make it to the meeting on the 25th, I'd like to address the proposed rate and the millage rate and property taxes for your consideration. This is not the year to do it with all the financial losses residents are experiencing due to COVID-19. And probably not next year as well. In my opinion, it is more than likely that we will be having increases in cases this winter coinciding with the flu season. This could result in shutdowns and further job loss along with our daily needs becoming more expensive. We just do not know. Now is the time to tighten belts and time for postponing projects to encourage growth. Villarica is a nice, small city. Do we really need to pull in people from other cities that aren't this nice, including Atlanta and from neighboring states? Why not just leave it small, a small, self-sufficient city? Sincerely, Sandra Bimke.
Okay, do you have an address for Ms. Bimke for the record?
I can tell you that it's River Trace, but I do not have an address.
Okay.
Concord Drive, I believe. Don't know the house number.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Does anyone else wish to make a public comment for the 2020 millage rate? Okay, seeing no other public comment takers, I will close the public comment portion of the public hearing. And with that, does staff have anything to add? Because we will take this up first item on the next agenda. Okay, with that, I will adjourn the public hearing for the 2020 millage rate. And now I will call to order the special called city council meeting for August 25th, 6:00 PM. And the first thing I'd like to do is hear a motion to adopt the agenda as presented or any modifications.
Move to adopt.
I have a motion to adopt this agenda and a second, all in favor. That is unanimous. At this time, we will also open public comment for anyone who would like to speak on the special called meeting agenda. If there's anybody here, please come forward. Okay, seeing no, no takers for public comments, I will close the public comment portion of the special called meeting and I will move into governing body A, adoption of the 2020 millage rate. Ms. Sarah Andrews, I'd ask you to come forward and open this portion of our meeting.
Do we have any IT help in the House?
Do we have any IT help here?
Okay, because since mine updated, it won't let me do anything, open it up. So, okay, I can probably operate without it based on the agenda.
Let me just, let me check with the city attorney real quick. I have just been handed a, another sign up for public comment, although I had just closed that. Typically, I would not do that. Would it be appropriate to allow that?
I think so.
All right. Sarah, I would ask you to hold on just for a minute. I, I, one of the things we'd like to do is always make sure we get as much public feedback as we can. We do have a protocol and we did already close it, but I am going to open it back up for Mr. Richard My, I'm sorry, I can't pronounce your last name, but if you'll come forward, give your name and address for the record and we will give you three minutes to speak, sir.
My name is Richard Myberg, 58 Legend Drive, Villarica, Georgia, 30180. And my comments are in regard to the smoking ordinance.
Yes, sir.
And my wife and I spend a lot of money in Villarica rather than Carrollton. And we enjoy going to a restaurant that does not have anyone under the age of 21 in there, particularly young kids, so we can sit and relax and enjoy a meal. I know there's smoking allowed in there. My wife and I will enjoy a cigar on occasion, but there's very few people smoking cigarettes in there. But it's just a nice place to go for an adult dinner without children running around and bumping into things, et cetera. So I just wanted to make it known that, you know, we can go to Carrollton just as easily as Villarica, but we'd rather spend our money here since that's our post office. And we've never found it, I am a very staunch non-smoker when it comes to cigarettes. I've never smoked them, never will. And I don't find that atmosphere at Cinema Tavern to be abusive in any way because their air filtration and air movement is such that cigarette smoke, which usually annoys me, doesn't bother me at all. So that's what I wanted to say. And I'd rather keep having dinner once or twice a week at Cinema Tavern than going down to Carrollton to sit down at one of the restaurants down there that have outdoor patios.
Okay, thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
All right, since I opened back up, is there anyone else? Okay, now I will close the public comment portion of the meeting for a second time and I apologize. Appreciate everybody's patience with, with that. Okay, Ms. Andrews, if you would come forward and open up the adoption of the 2020 millage rate.
As we discussed in the public hearing just a few moments ago, again, the current rate is 5.743. What was advertised is 6.5. Staff is recommending 6.25. That's what we have been working in our budget, which is still unbalanced in the general fund when we think of the buckets. The general fund itself is not balanced yet, even looking at 6.25. And as we discussed last week for two days, all the projects that we do need to address on the general fund, which is the governmental side. So staff is recommending a 6.25 millage.
Thank you, ma'am. So let's just clarify a couple of things. Number one, the budget that you have presented that we got copies of last week is a preliminary budget. It is based on a rate of 6.25 for the meals and it is currently $1.6 million short at 6.25. Is that correct? Okay, I just wanted to make sure that you clarified that. Okay. Tom, do you have anything to add before we start council discussion? Okay, all right. So I would like to open this up for council discussion at this time to discuss the setting of the 2020 millage rate to fund the 2021 budget.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Let me point out that even at the current millage rate, since we had an increase in the digest, their current millage rate of 5.743 will produce a 10% increase in the revenue for the new budget. I'm going to make a motion that we adopt.
Well, hold on, we're not going to entertain any motions right now. First, we're having discussion.
All right.
Okay.
I reserve my motion.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else have any discussion?
I think I would just say that, I'm sure I'm not the only one that, oh, sorry. I'm sure not the only one who doesn't take this lightly. I mean, this is significant deciding the millage rate for all the people that live in the city of Villarica and what people are going to pay for taxes. And this being an unprecedented year in so many different ways. Something that I found a little challenging this year, part of it was related to COVID. By the way, Sarah, thank you so much for the, I think I found these PowerPoints to be very helpful, even when I was watching the video. We feel a little backwards this year in that now some of y'all got this last Wednesday. I got it yesterday, the preliminary budget. So I haven't been able to analyze all the details. I was out of town for four days. I wasn't, came back on the weekend, wasn't able to analyze the details of any of the budget and yet going to be setting a rate. I just think we need to take seriously that we don't know the end impact of this COVID thing. People, whether they'll lose their homes, that sort of thing. And I just think we need to be real careful. At the same time, on the city side, we've got some really important things to do. And the money has to come from somewhere. We can raise the millage and we can get that money. Other citizens can't go raise the millage somewhere to get their money for their belt tightening. So I think we just need to weigh this and look at both sides. We realize we need to do important things, public safety, water, sewer, all that. And at the same time, it's the people that pay the taxes and including the businesses downtown and everything. I think that's it.
I appreciate that. Any other council members?
I'd like to make sure we draw a distinction in the budget between the general fund, which is funded by sales tax and the millage rate, and all the other funds. The water and sewer fund, the enterprise funds, the special, special use funds, those are not affected by the millage rate. And typically, the money in those funds are designated to special items. Hotel motel tax has to be used for certain things, not just anything we want it to be used for. The enterprise funds, water, sewage have to be used back in those organizations, not whatever we want to use them for. So that, that's more than half the budget. The $35 million budget, only about 12 million, 14 million of it is general fund. And in there, you find a lot of payroll, payroll taxes, training, medical expenses, things like that that get very hard to cut. Especially if we want to keep the employees we fought so hard to get. My starting point on the budget was we cannot go back to what we were doing for the last 20 years. We can't do that again. It doesn't work. So we have, we have to start moving forward. And in the last two years, Villarica has done a lot of really good things to fix stuff that was kicked down the road. We need to continue doing that. And that's my starting point on the budget. We can't go backwards. We have to continue doing what we've been doing for the, for the past two years. We have to continue that to get back to where our citizens want this town to be.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else?
I got one more comment here. For this fiscal year we're in, 2020, we have a budget of 35.3 million. But it looks like our expenditures are going to run to about 27.3. Why are we so short on the expenditures compared to the budget we approved?
Well, we're, that 22 million number is only through July, which, so that doesn't show the full fiscal year. We still have some significant dollars that are going to come out of the budget. Council just approved over a $2 million paving project. So those splot dollars that were budgeted, over $2 million this year, that will hopefully be spent out by the end of the year. We still have a bond payment to make. It's actually happening this week. We still have two months of payroll. So that was over $1.2 million in payroll still to come out. We still have to pay Douglas County the fire EMS payment, which is over $400,000. So yes, I see that when you look at 10 months' worth versus a 12-month budget, it does look like we have underspent. But we still have significant items that are coming out. But also, we have to budget for things. As Mr. Young said, there are, you know, all the funds are separate buckets. So I have to budget for splot. And so like, for instance, that's still sitting there this year, but I still had a budget for it. Self-funded insurance, it's its own fund. It's over $2 million by itself. I have to budget a certain amount. But we don't know how much medical or prescriptions will be spent out during the year. So, you know, that shows that we haven't spent what was fully budgeted. So there are things that I still have to budget for that may not translate to dollars out of the bank. But again, we still have some payments that are, significant payments that are still to be made.
Okay, you and I sat down at the table and added up those significant numbers. We came up with about $5 million for the next two months. You add that to the 22 and you're still at about the same number we had last year as far as expenditures go. Yet we increased the budget from 29.9 million up to 35 million, but we're, expenditures are going to be about the same as the year before. So I'm not sure why we're so far under the budget. Even if, even if you extrapolate out the $5 million added on to the 22, we're still well short of the $35 million budget. And y'all want to increase it for next year by 1.6 million. So I'm having trouble with that part of it.
Well, and we, aside from the items that we still have to spend out, again, I still have to budget for a full year as expectation. So like, we looked at the numbers yesterday. The self-funded insurance fund, we have, we've budgeted over $2 million. We've only spent out a million. So, you know, we could have half a million to a million dollar savings in that fund, but I still have to re-budget it next year. So without going line by line.
We haven't had time to do that yet, but we will.
When COVID hit, didn't you take steps to trim back wherever you could, not knowing what was going to happen, trim back on expenses? And so that expenses this year are not totally representative of what we would have done in other times?
Revenue and expenses this year are not necessarily what's expected, not what was budgeted. For, for instance, the recreation department, Pine Mountain Gold Museum, even court, library, those, those revenue generators were shut down for several months. So yes, some of the corresponding expense was reduced. So recreation, they didn't have to go out and buy helmets and uniforms and pay referees and things or class instructors. So we are, we do have some savings there. Same thing with Pine Mountain, you know, if they didn't have their seasonal help like normal or their contractors that we bring in for special events. So there were some savings. However, we have also used this time to do maintenance and repairs on those facilities that were down. So I'm not going to say we totally stopped spending. We took advantage of this time to, you know, it's pretty rare that we have this much time to, with the facility shut down. So we took advantage of that with maintenance and repairs.
Okay. So I want to point out now, we are setting the millage rate tonight, but we are not through with the budget process. In fact, we're, we're fairly early in the budget process in terms of the meetings that the council will have. Mr. Hannaback talked about not being at some of the budget workshops and we did have some, but there will be more.
But the city suffered itself this year in revenue streams that we continue to pay out. We discussed in a budget meeting last week, maybe closing some of those departments where we lost revenue streams. That's not, it's not even feasible really, because let's say we did close the department. I don't save much. The reality is, I'm still paying the full pay because we're a local government, we're a city government. We end up paying all of it in unemployment. So for six or eight months, I'm still paying the salary for these employees, even if they're let go. Those aren't feasible options to me. I'm not looking at closing any of those departments. It just doesn't make sense. Between Pine Mountain, the library, the recreation department, that's where our revenue losses occurred. That's where we've got over a million dollars of these losses here. So in short, it doesn't seem to me fiscally responsible to have a millage rate that's below the 6.25. But obviously, that's what we're here to do tonight, and there'll be a vote for it. So I'm wanting to make sure that every council member has an opportunity to speak or ask questions to staff before we set this rate tonight. So is there any other comments?
Sarah?
Yes.
You said a millage rate of six would cause us to have to cut $2 million out of the budget. Is that correct? It goes from 1.6 million at six and a quarter to $2 million out of the budget at six.
I don't think it's quite that, but yes, it would be, let's see, one mil is worth 700,000, half a mil is what we're asking y'all to raise it, which is 350,000. So it'd be half of that added on to the 1.6 million, so 1.8 million or so.
I think at the current rate, it comes to 2 million. I think it incrementally jumps. Is that right? It's 1.6 and then about 1.8?
Right.
And then about 2, right? And that's going backwards. Six and a quarter, six flat, and 5.743.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Anybody else have any?
I would just say you made some valid points, and I agree with the fact that when you have a library that, over there, that's just several years old, you're not going to go over and just shut down your library and send everybody home. And that, I don't see that as feasible either. I know we've done rollbacks, and I, even last year, I know I made a statement as to this might be the last year for a rollback for a while, and that we needed to look at not rolling back as we even approached this year. So I haven't even taken that into consideration. As far as the cuts on the budget or the preliminary budget, it's hard for me to know because we've had, y'all have had the book for less than a week, and I got it yesterday. So I have no clue what I might look at as to cuts in there. And I realize, it's not your fault. We got numbers late, y'all, I don't know what kind of hours y'all are, I know what kind of hours you've worked in the past sometime trying to get this stuff together. We had to wait for numbers from the two different counties and all that. So there's no fault on that. It just really complicates it.
And I, I'm sympathetic to that, too. I completely understand what you're saying. The, the one thing, though, that is true is that the budgets for the city are relatively the same every year. What changes, in other words, the departments are the same. We, you know, we haven't added a fire department. We haven't added any major department. So what I would think we would be looking at is what these departments are asking for this year in terms of personnel or capital expenses or equipment. We know that in this budget here, they're asking for, is it six police cars?
Yes.
When they need eight.
Right.
I mean, so even right now with this budget, I can't look at cutting police cars. They ask for very few vehicles. I'm talking about citywide, certainly the police department asked for the most. And they've asked for almost no personnel. There were.
Two new positions, yeah, two new positions, two transferred positions, and two upgrades.
Upgrades, right. So it just seems to me, and the statement's been made, and I'm not going to say who because it's a valid point, I don't mean to discredit it, but that this is not a bare bones budget. It may not be a bare bones budget. But for the things that I can cut, it doesn't seem responsible to cut those police cars or those personnel positions or the COLA or some of those things. Now, there are things in here that we, you know, if we, if push came to shove, we would probably do bigger cuts on, for sure. But, but the vast majority of what I see in here is not going to move around a million dollars, certainly not a million six. So to set the rate below that, it's just going to make everybody's job even harder. And if you have the cuts to do it and you can get the votes for that, that's one thing. But I don't, I don't see those. Anybody else have any comments? Okay. Mr. Carter, you had said that you wanted to make a motion. You reserved that. I will allow you to make a motion.
Okay, and I want to point out that at the current rate of 5.743, it produces a 10% increase in the property tax. If you go to 6%, you get a 15% increase in property tax over last year. If you go to 6.25, you get a 20% increase. I'm going to make a motion that we keep the current millage rate at 5.743 for 2020.
Okay, I have a motion to keep the millage rate at 5.734.
743.
5.743, sorry. I thought that's what I said. That's what I have written down. 5.743 for the, to set the 20, 20 millage rate. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to keep the millage rate at 5.743. Is there any discussion? Okay, if there's no discussion, I will call for, all in favor, raise your hand. All opposed? Okay, that motion will fail. The vote is two to three. Okay. Is there any additional discussion or anyone else would like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we set the millage rate for 2020 at 6.25.
Okay, I have a motion to set the millage rate for 2020 at 6.25. Do I have a second?
Can I make a counter motion? A compromise motion?
No, ma'am. Do I have a second on the, on the motion on the table? I have a motion and a second, all in, is there any discussion?
I guess the only discussion is depending on how this vote goes or at least to think about of a compromise of six mils rather than 6.25. Just keep that in your mind to think about. These are difficult times for a lot of people that are paying these bills.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other discussion? If not, I'll call the question. All in favor? All opposed? The motion carries. It's a vote of three to two. We will set the millage rate for 2020 at 6.25. Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
Okay. We will move on now to Tab B. City manager Tom Barber will present the amendment to the smoke-free air ordinance.
Thank you, Mayor. So in the time that's passed since the last meeting, our city attorney has, and his, in the office there, have put together some information for us to consider in a repeal and replace action on our smoke-free air ordinance. The primary issue, as I understood it from talking with members of council, was the decision to allow or not allow an establishment that restricted their customers to the age of 21 and up to allow smoking. That seemed to be the biggest single sticking point. And then there were other issues about smoking in service lines and other things that, that came up after that. So at this point, staff is recommending the repeal and replace that's presented here, and it's open to you for discussion.
All right, thank you. Let me ask Mr. Mecklen real quick. Am I correct that the changes here are essentially twofold? One is that we do allow an exemption for a restaurant or a bar to allow smoking inside their establishment as long as they deny entry and employment to any individual under the age of 21. Is that the, is that a primary change here?
That, and for private clubs, that's true.
And also for private clubs?
Right.
Yes, sir, okay.
Those are the two big changes.
So that is defined as private clubs, military officer clubs, and non-commissioned officer clubs, who also restrict access and employment to persons over, hold on, it says who restrict access and employment to persons over 21 years of age. That needs to be corrected.
Which section are you looking at?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that till I read it out loud. It's just a typo, but.
It's not necessarily a typo, it's just they don't mirror each other. One of them says that they do not employ any individual under the age of 21. The other one says that it restricts access and employment to persons over 21 years of age. Saying the same thing, but it's just saying it in a different way.
Okay.
But the intent is you have to be 21 to work or attend either one of those.
Okay, well.
So I'll make sure that it's correct.
I would, yeah, I would just like to make sure that the intent is correct in the final version. Okay, is there, are there any other pertinent changes that we need to know about?
Well, one change that Councilwoman McPherson pointed out, which indeed is an important one, and that is that our former ordinance required that you have a sign at every business that did not allow smoking, which is every business in town. That's something we had never enforced. We'd never made every business post a no smoking sign. This changes it to say that every business has to take reasonable steps to prevent smoking.
But those who do not permit smoking would not be required to post any signage. What about those who do permit smoking? Is there signage required there?
Yes, there is. And there is a requirement even for those who do not permit, to take reasonable steps to not let people smoke in their business. The example that I used is that if I'm running a real estate office and I have myself and a staff person there, I don't need to have a big sign on the front of my door saying no smoking. I can simply get up, if a customer lights up, to walk over to them and say, you can't smoke in here.
I understand, and I appreciate that. I was pointing that out so that it would be part of the verbal record here tonight.
Right.
Okay, are there any other pertinent changes that we should mention tonight before we discuss it? Okay?
No.
All right, I will just make a few comments to how we got here. There existed a ordinance in the city of Villarica that prohibited smoking in all public places, on public sidewalks and all public businesses. And that ordinance had not been being enforced, and during COVID, a particularly difficult time for people with respiratory issues. I got a couple of phone calls and one particularly asking that we do something about it, and I thought that we would take a look at a non-smoking ordinance for the city of Villarica. When I called the city attorney to ask him to look at modeling one, he said, well, sir, there's already one on, on the books. And he sent me a copy of it, and I read through it. And then I sent a notice to the council and to staff to begin enforcing that ordinance. At that time, I had one or two businesses contact me early. It ended up being two businesses, but only one really contacted me earlier. And then council, a council member wanted to, to get involved in that and maybe make a change to the ordinance. The, this, this is the compromise that everybody worked on, and they've been working on it since our last council meeting. And this seems to be consistent with what the businesses, businesses had asked for and what the council person had asked for. It's not where I am on this because I would prefer that if we allowed businesses to have smoking, that they would not also front a city sidewalk or a, be in the downtown district because there is spillover that really has no real ability to be enforced. It places these guys in a situation of having to constantly deal with that type of conduct because the businesses make no effort whatsoever to help with that. In fact, in some cases, they accommodate it. So I still would be opposed to this. So that is, is where I am even on this one. I will open this up for council discussion now. Does anybody have any comments?
I have a question for David, I'm sorry, if I may. And perhaps I'm just missing it, but if I'm standing in the parking lot of Pine Mountain Gold Museum, which is an open space.
Correct.
Though it is a city facility, I'm not seeing how this ordinance prohibits me from smoking.
Well, there's a second point to that.
Okay.
On city property, we have the right to declare whether we're going to let people smoke on our property or not, irregardless of.
Of the ordinance, okay.
Of the ordinance. I mean, it's as if I walked into your home and you told me, don't smoke in my house. I'd say, well, there's no law against it.
Okay, I just, what concerned me was.
Don't we have that in our city policy, though?
We do, yes.
Over on the rec area or anything?
I understand. Go ahead, Mr. Mottan.
Well, it says, because we do have Section 16-70, which says all enclosed facilities, including buildings and vehicles owned. I mean, if we just took out enclosed and just said all facilities or open spaces even, I mean, the same applies maybe for if you're at the V-Plex during the Fourth of July event. The other thing, so that was a concern for me because if we're walking down the sidewalk, which I guess could be interpreted within the 10-foot rule down here in downtown, I guess that can be interpreted within the 10-foot rule, but I just, for me, I like to see something that would be more explicit to say that really, public places, public right-of-ways, just no smoking permitted unless, you know, falls on an exception. The other thing, and this is just, this may not be, I think it's just, in Section 16-75, Part Four, it says areas within the city in which the mayor and aldermen, so I think we just need a councilman there. And I would just say one more thing, just for me, I'm not a fan of allowing the, allowing smoking in the hotels even at the 20%. That's, you know, I'm, I'm fine with, you know, when we spoke at the last council meeting, I think it was pretty clear that I'm in favor of the, of the bars and restaurants that are prohibited, the 21 and over. But I don't know if I can go much beyond that as written here right now, so, unless I hear something compelling.
So, okay, first, let me just see if any other council members have any questions and then, or any comments, and then I'll ask you about possible amendments to, go ahead.
I'd like to state for the record that I am opposed to this amendment. I don't think we should allow smoking in restaurants and bars. I'm wondering, what's so special about a restaurant or bar? Why couldn't a real estate office allow smoking if they had a sign, no one under 21 admitted? Or a professional office that had a sign, no one under, what's so special about a restaurant or a bar? I think we're all better served if smoking in public places is prohibited.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have any questions?
Yeah, I would just say that we've been working on this now for a couple months, and I'm just, I mean, I didn't get everything I wanted in this. I think it's a pretty good compromise. But it concerns me that any of these statements of changes, we were given this to look at, should have been called into David when he was putting all this together. I just hate for us to spend, drag stuff out when he asks us for input. Read it, give me your input. Tell, tell me what you'd like to change. And I just hate for us to go month after month, you know, drag this out. I still think it'd be a good idea, but we're not going to have it, we don't have the votes for it, and that's okay, to allow things like cigar bars. I think just the philosophy of government, of freedom in general, means that government doesn't necessarily have to stick its tentacles into people's private business and tell them how to do everything in their four walls. And when you start to get down the slope of we know how you should be healthy and to take care of you, is how you end up with a place like New York City who decides to put a giant soda tax and everything else because they know what you should drink and what size you should drink because one's not healthy. I don't like smoking, I don't like cigarette smoke. People like to hang out. They don't tend to hang out in real estate places, but they do hang out in restaurants and bars with their friends. And people own these places, nobody has to go in there. I don't have to go in, they post smoking, and, and they get, I just want them to be able to choose. We're not telling them, you have to have it or you don't have to have it. You have the freedom to choose.
I got a question for Mr. Mecklen.
I got a question for Ms. McLean. This new change, if I'm running a real estate office, would I be allowed to have smoking in my office?
No.
It's only for restaurants and bars?
No, the change, that's correct.
The change would?
The change that we're making, I mean, it's still prohibited in your real estate office. The thing about your real estate office, though, is that if you're the only one in it...
Even if I put a sign up, I'm not allowed to have smoking in there?
That's correct. But it's unlikely the police are going to be coming looking in your office to find out what you're doing in there.
And a lot of that's with state law.
Highly unlikely.
It's already outlawed in a lot of places, state law.
Let me just hit on a couple of things that you said, Leslie, because the first thing is that if there are changes, that might be good, because a compromise is the only way to possibly get this to move if it were to just simply, if a person up here said, "Hey, I want this particular compromise, or I'm not voting for it, it'll die today and it won't come back." So a compromise might be an appropriate discussion, but if you, you know, if you say, "Hey, I want it all," or "I want nothing," then, you know, that's one place to be. Let me also point out that there are seventeen thousand or so people that live here. And they have to be represented, too. And they elect the government to come up here and make decisions for them in the best way they possibly can, and hopefully, given all the information that is available, they will make a decision that's similar to what the majority of the people in the city would also agree to. I would proposition that if we were to put this on the ballot, the public would agree with the ordinance that already stood. But we haven't done that, and I've made no attempt to do that. The point is that we're here to represent a lot more than just a few people. We're here to represent some seventeen thousand citizens that live here. Okay, does anybody else have any comments? Okay, if there are no comments, David, let me get back to you about these changes.
Okay.
Possibly changes. Would it be appropriate here to discuss possible changes and make it, or should that also be something that is sent back to you in a back and forth? And I'm willing to do whatever.
Yeah.
If it can be done tonight, I don't know what the proposes are, but I don't mind looking at it. You tell me your opinion first.
I would say that if you're going to make the few simple changes that we've discussed here, that we can do it tonight, so that you can take a vote on it. If you're talking about more substantive, significant changes, then it would be better probably to make those changes in writing, so that you could have a document in front of you that is pretty much complete.
I understand that. Okay, so let me first ask, does anyone have any changes that they would like to propose? And then we'll determine if they're substantive.
I've already noted the one that Councilman Montahan made about changing alderman to councilman. That's clearly...
Okay, I understand that. Did you have anything else, sir?
Well, the enclosed portion, I don't know if that's a, if we wanted to consider that as well. When it comes to the public facilities or the city-owned facilities.
I think that that would be, would be fine to take that, to just take enclosed out altogether, so that it includes all city facilities.
Right.
So city facilities, would that also include sidewalks? Which I know we already covered, but I want to make sure that that's clear as well.
I think it would, with the exception that on those restaurants where we allow them to actually set up on the sidewalk, that'd be a question as to whether or not it would apply there or not. I can't think of anybody who has, well, I can't think of one restaurant that has seating on the sidewalk.
And if they also allowed smoking in their facility, they would be able to allow smoking on that sidewalk? It's great.
I don't think we would want to allow that, because people walking down the sidewalk shouldn't have to smell the smoke.
It's different if they have a patio off the side that's part of the, isn't, one second.
But if that's questionable, David, we need to know that, right now.
Well, I guess the answer to that is that if it's a city sidewalk, there'd be no smoking allowed on it, period.
I'm comfortable with that. If that's the case, if that's the way the ordinances are, if we need to make a...
If we take out that language.
Write in an amendment real quick.
If we take out the language.
The enclosed part?
Right.
Okay. Did anyone else, Mr. Carter, did you have a?
Yeah, well, this is not a, you know, perfect change. It's by far, for me, a much better change than what we have, because I do believe that people that are running their own business should be allowed to make that decision. I think we're taking away their right, and we don't allow them to do that. People do not have to enter that business when they see it says, "Smoking's allowed inside here." They do not have to go inside. And if his business falls to nothing, he'll make a change. But I really believe they should be allowed to make that decision.
And as I said before, I agree with that in principle. However, not on the public sidewalk and not in the downtown area. And I do believe that there is spillout onto the public sidewalk, even in the best of intentions, which doesn't always happen.
Could I ask, David, one more thing? Because there's language in the ordinance that has to do with not, if you're standing, you can't stand within ten feet or a reasonable distance of a door where, to an entry to a place where there isn't smoking, ten feet or reasonable distance, playground, there's all these different things. Now, obviously, our playgrounds, we don't allow it anyway, because that's city parks and everything. How does that relate to the sidewalk thing? Because you have to be ten feet away from a door, you're also not supposed to be, like, if they go out back and smoke behind a place, they're not supposed to be near, like, the air intake. There's language in there for all that, and I was trying to see how that related to sidewalks, because when you're thinking about doors opening, set maybe behind the building, I can see how that might relate.
Well, with the change that Councilman Montahan is tendering, which is to take out the language about prohibiting it in just enclosed places, I think that prohibits it on all sidewalks at any time, whether you're within ten feet of the door or not.
Okay, so...
Can't smoke on the sidewalk.
Okay, so what happens, because I've seen this, what happens when the employees at certain downtown businesses go out back, it's not the sidewalk yet? And, you know, they move away from the door, you know, because it's non-smoking, they're restaurant workers. I've seen some of them are restaurant workers. Does that still happen? Can they still do that? They're not technically on a sidewalk when they're out back in most of those places.
If they're on private property that the restaurant owns, I think technically that still would be a violation of our ordinance. And I think technically, it's probably still a violation of state law also, but...
If it's private property, like the alleyway, for instance, that's owned by the building owners? I guess I'm just trying to think of how this plays out.
It's a public establishment. And yeah, I think it would be a violation.
So you're referring to the alleyway, these businesses on...
Like behind Gabe's Chat and Chew.
Are you familiar with where she's talking about?
Yeah, and those, that's a public alleyway, so technically, that's public property. So it would be illegal to do it there anyway. Now, I think we have to try and use common sense here. I can't envision our police department roaming around, looking for employees standing behind their business, smoking. I mean, that's just common sense, that they probably are not going to do that. It's not, it's not an effective use of our resources, but technically, it's probably a violation.
No smoke, please.
Yep.
So these little cigarette, I guess you'd call them ashtrays, that I see on the sidewalks when I be walking in the morning, so they're going to have to take those up if this ordinance pass?
Yeah, I would think so, yes. So shouldn't be any smoking on the sidewalk.
Well, they're going to have to take them up if this ordinance don't pass.
Well, but note this, I was going to tell Trading Post they needed to put one by theirs, because what happens, people legally can smoke in their vehicle. And if they get out doing this, I'd rather them stick it in one of those things that kills it than throw it down on the curb. So I'm not sure that we want to get rid of everywhere where somebody would get out of their vehicle and maybe extinguish it. I don't know. I don't know. You can't solve all those things. Government can't solve all those things. If people just wouldn't litter, right? If everybody would be courteous, we wouldn't have to worry about it.
Well, if everybody do the right thing, I wouldn't need a $4 million police department.
And we wouldn't need speed humps that we don't have yet, but because...
We've got some. Calm down.
Speeders, I get calls all the time.
Okay, Mr. Young.
I'm having a hard time reconciling the outrage at telling a restaurant owner that you can't smoke when we're perfectly willing in this, in sixteen point seven one, to say bingo facilities, convention facilities, gaming facilities, hotels and motels, bowling places, retail stores. We tell them that you can't smoke, but it's okay, you get outraged about telling a restaurant owner he can't smoke. So, you know, there's a little hypocrisy there. We're telling a whole lot of people you can't, but you want to make an exception for somebody special.
Well, if I had my way, we wouldn't be telling them all what to do. State law, well before I ever lived up here, they passed state law, and we can lobby. I don't think we should be telling everybody what to do, but state law already covers a whole bunch of this. We're deciding what we're going to do on the local level here. Like I said, I'm glad it's not in a lot of places, I'm just not one to be the one that demands it. I think the public in general has moved away from smoking. It was really bad in the seventies, and people accommodated it in places they never should have, children exposed and everything. And most people want to be in non-smoking, and that's all well and good. I'm not for having all those rules, but that's where we are.
Well, state law goes a long way in smoking, and it may well go further soon, but cities reserve the right by constitutional law to be more restrictive. For instance, the state law allows you to have adult video stores and other adult-type shops, but I'm not going to have them here. I'm going to do everything I can to make sure that doesn't happen here. They allow these hookah lounges. I'm not going to be interested in having that here either. The city has to make its own decisions and to do it in the best interest of the most number of people, in my view. Okay, does anybody else have any, anything to add for this? David, I believe you have said that the changes that were mentioned here tonight, you can make
Yes.
comfortably, even if this were to move forward. Okay, that being the case, does anybody have any other comments? All right, I will entertain a motion on this item.
I'll make a motion to repeal our smoke-free ordinance and replace it with Section sixteen dash sixty-eight through sixteen dash eighty-four, contained in the attached amendment.
Okay.
As amended, as amended by the comments tonight.
Yeah, and as amended through the city attorney tonight.
Okay, and, all right, so I have a motion to repeal our smoke-free air ordinance and replace it with Section sixteen through sixty-eight through sixteen eighty-four, contained in the attached amendment and as amended by discussion tonight that will be provided by the city attorney. And, all right, do I have a second?
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. Is there any additional discussion? Okay, all in favor? All opposed? Okay, I have three in favor. The motion carries. I have one no and one abstention. David, can you get me that, those changes soon as possible so that I can make?
I'll get it to you in the morning. I'll send it to everybody in the morning.
Necessary steps next, okay? All right, we will now move on to...
Agreement.
Yes, B two, agreement with Morris Shackelford Investments and, is it Coe Morgan Investments? Mr. Barber, please present that for us, sir.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I'll handle this.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Yes. We have for your consideration tonight, an agreement with some landowners concerning the zoning of their property. When the staff was reviewing the zoning of the properties in the city to pass the new zoning ordinance and map that was passed by the council recently, there were a few landowners that appealed the potential zoning on their property. The first agreement for your consideration is with Morris Shackelford Investments and Coe Morgan Investments. They had three parcels. This is on Highway sixty-one. These are the southernmost tracks in the city, and there's parcels on both sides of sixty-one. The landowner appealed the potential zoning, the city proposed or downzoning the property from general, commercial to ag. And the landowner appealed, claiming that they had vested rights in the property. They claimed that because they had initiated the development on the property, that that vested them with the rights to have that property continue to be zoned, commercial zoning. And so they were going to fight the city on the downzoning to agricultural. They also stated that they had a purchase and sale contract on the property that was for a significant sum, and that if the city rezoned the property, it would allow the purchaser to opt out of that contract and cause them damages for that. The city's main goal was to be able to control future development on the property, should somebody want to develop a commercial development on the property. And so the landowners were agreeable that if the city left that property zoned, commercial, that they would agree that any future commercial development would be brought before the council for approval before it's developed. So it enabled them to continue forward with their contract and allows the city to control development on that property like the city wanted.
All right, thank you, Avery. That was a great presentation. I think everyone here is probably familiar with that, and you did a great job. Is there any discussion from council? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I've got, you said they've got a purchase agreement?
Yes, that's correct.
So if somebody else purchases this property, would this requirement that we approve any future site plan still apply to a new owner?
Yes, that's correct.
That is a condition of this agreement, sir.
Their heirs and assigns.
They are allowed to make this agreement and make it binding.
In the zoning ordinance, if we rezone something out of agricultural and into residential, whatever, if there's no change in that property in a year, it goes back. This agreement doesn't have any timeframe on it.
That's correct.
Should it? Should, if they've got a purchase agreement, should we have something reasonable? Two years, or just to make sure that they're pursuing this endeavor properly, diligently?
And the language in the ordinance, as you mentioned, does say that they have a year or two. And the language that they pulled out says, "Initiate development." And so they were claiming that they initiated the development, that they started that development, and so that they have those rights vested in it being a commercially zoned property, because they initiated it, and that's what the exact language of the ordinance that they pointed out said. So they were not, they were not willing to agree to that term. But what they were willing to agree to is that before they pull any permits, that they'd have the site plan approved by the council.
And keep in mind, they're under the old zoning and the old zoning language as part of this discussion. Okay, anybody else? All right, if there is no more discussion, do I have a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. We authorize the mayor to execute the attached agreement between the city of Villarica and landowners Morris Shackelford Investments LLC and Coe Morgan Investments Incorporated.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? I mean, I see it all over your face.
I'm good.
Okay, I'll call for the, all in favor? All opposed? Okay, the motion carries. We have four in favor and one opposed. Let's move on to B three, development agreement with David Scherner and DMS Columbia Drive LLC. Are you handling this one, Avery?
Yes.
Go ahead, sir.
This is a similar situation that we just discussed. This property was proposed by the city to be downzoned from industrial to agricultural property. This is two parcels. This is located on Merril Lake Boulevard, and it is across from Shoreline Parkway. And the landowner in this case, similar to the last one, appealed the potential zoning, claiming vested rights, also had a purchase and sale contract on the property, and was claiming that if the property was downzoned, then the purchaser could back out, and that would cause damages. The owner in this case... The owner in this case, of course, the city has talked about a potential extension of Shoreline Parkway that would run through this property. And so, in exchange for leaving the property currently zoned industrial, the landowner would dedicate, or give the city an option to have the landowner dedicate a 100-foot right-of-way along the northern portion of the property. The industrial development of the property may not work out. It's been zoned that for 50 years, and it's never been developed that way. So, it's potentially possible that the developer will want to change that zoning to commercial at some time, if which case that the city approves that, then the landowner would develop or donate at that time a 100-foot right-of-way through the center of the property to the city for the Shoreline Drive extension. So, that's the proposed agreement to resolve the zoning appeal in this instance.
Okay, thank you, Avery. Again, that's a good description of this item. Okay, council, does anyone have any questions?
Avery, so, section six, just so I'm reading this correctly, basically, it appears to say that if the current owner developer of the property conveys the property to another owner developer, that conveyance would essentially say that they have to develop, because of that conveyance, they have to develop the property in accordance with the zoning ordinance in effect at that time. Since my understanding, I think these properties have been zoned industrial for decades.
That's 53 years, I believe.
So, this, am I reading this correctly, to say that the act of conveyance, well, since it constitutes an act of development, and then consistent with the zoning at the time of such conveyance, so they would have to comply with the current modern zoning ordinance, not the zoning ordinance at the time that it was...
That's correct. They will have to comply with the current zoning. Both, this property is being rezoned to, under the current ordinance, so it will not be governed by the prior ordinance.
Okay.
Thank you, Avery.
But it will still be industrial.
That's correct. It will still be industrial.
Which is not what we'd like to see, but based on the compromise here, we're hoping eventually it will just be commercial, and the city gets out of that this access for the Shoreline Parkway.
That's correct. The property will be required to be donated by the landowner to the city for the purpose of that extension.
And this is the written agreement to make that happen. Okay, any other comments from council or questions? If not, I will entertain a motion.
One question, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
Just looking real quick. Okay, never mind, I found it, thank you.
Okay, all right, now I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we authorize the mayor to execute the attached development agreement between the city of Villarica and landowners David Sherner and DMS Columbia Drive LLC.
Okay, okay, I have a motion and a second, that we authorize the mayor to execute the attached development agreement between the city of Villarica and landowners David Sherner and DMS Columbia Drive LLC. Is there any further discussion? If not, all in favor? Okay, that is unanimous. That motion will carry. Okay, I think Avery is finished, so we will now hear from Mr. Barber on reconsider slash rescind the denial of conditional use permit application. Okay, let's hear from you. I have some stuff to say, but I'll just...
I'm welcome for you to say it, because I'm merely the messenger on this one. I was informed that there was interest on the part of a council member to reconsider and rescind the decision on the conditional use permit, and so, my involvement in this is to prepare this cover sheet.
Okay, well, that's fair enough. So, and I'm gonna make a few comments, and then, David, do you have anything you want to add before we start?
Yeah, I would just...
Procedurally?
Yeah, I would say on the parliamentary procedure of this particular motion, a motion to rescind or reconsider, it can only be made by someone who voted in favor of the motion that succeeded. So, I think the vote was a three to two vote, so the motion to reconsider or rescind could only be made by somebody who voted to deny the earlier action.
Okay, so, there will only be one council member, well, okay, there'll possibly be, well, there could be three, who will have an opportunity to make a motion tonight, so let's keep that in mind. So, one of the considerations here is that, the best I could understand this application, it met all of the initial requirements, and it would be subject to a host of other procedures, such as environmental studies, traffic studies, upgrades and improvements to infrastructure, before this would ever happen, before any dirt would actually get moved. I was concerned right from the beginning that, given that, it almost felt to me as though the landowner didn't get a fair hearing here, because they were not, there was no discussion here substantively about why they would otherwise be denied. So, I was in favor of this, and I will now turn this over to council to have some discussion before we hear a motion.
I was the one that asked for this to be put on the agenda. In the discussion that I'd had with other council members, there were basically two problems, or two concerns with the trailer park. One was the potential for increased crime, and I understand that one, but my problem was mostly...
Let me just interrupt for a minute. You said trailer park, but it's a truck stop.
Truck stop, truck stop. My concern was traffic. Highway 101 is a mess, but I was convinced that we should give our city staff and GDOT an opportunity to see what could be done to mitigate any increase in traffic, and that the owners of this truck stop would have to put the infrastructure in to deal with that traffic, and to include West Industrial Court, which is a very lightweight road, being able to handle hundreds of trucks a day. I can take a couple of trucks, but not hundreds. It's a small road, plus exits and entrances. So, I'd like to give our city staff and GDOT a chance to see what they can do with this, and give the owner of this property the chance to do what he'd like to do with his property.
Okay, let me just, procedurally, either of you, David or Avery, is what he just said correct in terms of what would need to happen by the landowner before they could move forward with this project? In terms of the traffic study?
That was the condition that the staff had placed on the request, and if eventually this does get approved with those conditions, yes, they would have to satisfy the city and the DOT.
Yes, sir. I just wanted to make sure that that's, that is correct information.
That was the proposed condition.
Within that original item. Yes, sir.
Until you finally adopt it, I can't answer it.
Okay, I understand you're in a little bit of a spot till we actually get it, but what was presented to the council did contain that condition?
Yes.
Yes, sir, as a condition.
It did.
All right. Yes, sir.
If it's rescinded, if this is successful tonight, does this automatically come back before, or is it the next meeting?
I think the plan is that if it is rescinded, that it's scheduled to come back on September the 8th, because we will have to run a notice again, advertise in the paper, give people 15 days' notice of the hearing, to have a new hearing on it.
All right, okay.
Parliamentary question, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mecklen mentioned earlier that the motion to rescind this must come from a person that voted in favor, but does the second have to come from a person?
It does not.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, let me, just because I want to be fair here, and sometimes I go too fast. Is there any council members who would like to make any comments before we move to a motion?
Yes, I would like to.
All right, go ahead.
I prepared a statement, if that's okay.
Absolutely, go ahead. I thought you may have.
Three minutes, clock me, Tom.
I'm not gonna hold you to that, but please, don't go long.
Last week, the mayor provided some very insightful words about what is going on in Villarica. While it was in a different context, the mayor warned that the city, including its citizens, need to get very serious about what we are doing here. He warned that if we do not do so, then Villarica could be completely vulnerable, and we must take control of our own destiny. Over the weekend, I came across a tweet, which was also in a completely different context. I think it was in the context of relationships. However, that tweet said, "Part of attracting what you want is refusing to accept what you don't want, refusing to accept what you don't want." I believe that tweet also, excuse me, but though they were in different contexts, I believe they apply here. We, as a city council, have to ask ourselves, what do we want out of our city? We have to ask ourselves what we would like our city to be known for, and then we have to focus on that goal and discard those projects or proposals that would not get us there. We have to refuse what we don't want or do not want. This truck stop is not something that will accomplish our goal. Over the last couple of years, members of the city council and staff have visited different cities that have done a quote "right," including Sugar Hill, Woodstock, and most recently Covington. A Google search shows no truck stops in Sugar Hill, Woodstock, or Covington. Why? Truck stops do not fit in with these communities' goals. What do we want for Villarica? At our budget hearing last week, the city manager asked about moving away from starter home development into higher-value homes. He stated, "In order to do so, we need to attract jobs that will attract the higher-value home buyer." How does using 10 acres in our industrial park for a truck stop accomplish that? Look at the success of our industrial park. We have the North American headquarters of a German company. At our last regular session, we heard the story of a Japanese company that has a joint venture with a Villarica company that has equipment valued at our industrial park in the half a million dollar range. This is in addition to Sugar Foods, Print Pack, and Southwire. It was argued that in order for our industrial park to continue its success, we would need this truck stop. This is not supported by the facts. Before being elected to city council, I served on the Villarica Development Authority. I never heard such argument or proposal for a truck stop. I've worked with Carol Tomorrow, took the Chambers Leadership Academy program, and took classes on economic development. Again, I've never heard of such argument or proposal. I'm hard-pressed to believe that the success of our 40-year-plus industrial park or the prospects for a second industrial park would hinge on a truck stop. Let's look at what we do know. Truck stops increase truck traffic, period. We know this. Otherwise, they wouldn't be building the truck stop. At the public hearing, the developer's representative could not tell us how many trucks he anticipates to park. He blamed GDOT, but his site plan amounted to mere lines drawn on paper. He couldn't provide his best-case scenario. He further admitted that the owner developer had no plan to restrict trucks parking in the RV areas, which even if he could give us his best-case scenario, it is very likely the RV parking will be used for additional truck parking, which is commonplace at Temple's two truck stops. So, now, let's imagine a line of trucks traversing Highway 61 from I-20 to this proposed truck stop. The truck traffic is already very ready, is already very heavy with the trucks that serve the industrial park. Imagine what it would be like if you added an initial 150 to 200 trucks a day to that route. The effect of the traffic goes beyond the intersection where the truck stop is proposed. Further, these questions do not even address the effects of increasing the transient population which result from some facilities. It doesn't affect the socioeconomic. It doesn't affect, if you go out to Temple and you see their entire parking lot is full of homeless folks sitting in cars. It doesn't affect just the environment. And I don't mean the grass and the trees, I mean just the environment of our city. So, we have to ask ourselves, is this proposal what we want for our city? Does it comport with the goals of our city? In my view, such facility would serve as a burden on our citizens, our police force, and our community at large. Accordingly, I am opposed to the rescission of the denial of the conditional permit. Thank you.
You were right, that was a long statement. But let me say this, I appreciate the comments, and I think probably the first paragraph, and I don't know if you broke that out into paragraphs, there's an item gonna come before the council here pretty soon, that I'd like you to replace truck stop with another item and let you read it, because I think it would be highly appropriate for what we do want in the city of Villarica. Let me hit a couple of things that you said, though. I agree that those who presented this, the applicant, and they, those they brought here did a poor job. I don't think they did a good job of presenting it, and that's sort of what put them in that spot. Right now in Villarica, though, I get a number of complaints about tractor-trailers lining the exit ramps. I have an officer nodding his head, because we don't have adequate parking here for these trucks. We have an industrial park, we're looking at having a second industrial park. So, if you don't end up with this truck stop down there, you're gonna end up with a truck stop somewhere closer to 20, which is much more visible to those who pass through our city. We also have been working on for 30 years and actually have a let date for the north bypass. There's no question that the 18-wheel traffic will increase on that, and it will run right along that road. And a truck stop, it seems to me that would be very difficult to find a better location than at an industrial park entrance. Now, all of that being said, there is really no solid reason to believe that this truck stop is gonna end up over there. There are a number of problems with that site, but we have conditioned it in the motion that was presented to the council, and I think that we have put forward some speed bumps that we don't end up with a problem. You point out very important things, I mean, and they're all real, but I don't think we gave the applicant an opportunity to get there first, to make their decision, and that's why I support the rescission of this ordinance, of this motion. Does anybody else have any comments? Okay, with that, if there are no other comments, I will entertain a motion.
I move to rescind the action taken by the council on August 11th to deny the conditional use permit application of Viral Patel for the property located at the intersection of Industrial Boulevard and West Industrial Court, Industrial Court West.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Is there any additional discussion? If there is, Mr. Montan?
If I may say one thing.
Thirty seconds.
They have two truck stops in Temple, and they also line the exits there, too.
So, that won't resolve that problem?
Absolutely not.
Any other comments? I'll come up with something else. Any other comments? Okay, let me get all in favor. And all opposed? All right, the motion to rescind is granted, the vote was three to two. Staff, please prepare that to come back. I'm not gonna set a date for that, because we want to make sure the applicant has an opportunity to make their best case. I would encourage them to do a better job. I absolutely would, and I know this is being recorded, and that's why I said it. Okay, that being said, that reaches the end of the agenda. Is there any other comments from staff? David, council members, does anybody have any additional comments that you'd like to make? Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I have a motion to adjourn and a second, all in favor. We are adjourned.